Welcome, everybody. We're going to get started. I'm Mrs. Moran, I'm the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Really appreciate you coming out on a Saturday. The Board of Selectmen has been too late. Part of our plan to outreach is to have these sort of town meeting kind of sessions. We're trying something coming to you, coming to your zip code. They'll be at every zip code in town ultimately. A couple of welcome points. Just want to let you know, you know, we kind of go macro and micro. I was yesterday with Secretary Jay Ash at the Creedsit 1K consortium with all the Cape readers. My colleagues Doug Brown and Sam Patterson were there as well. Just really raising to the state level issues that we have in Falmouth. Whether it's where's the money for the bike path that we were promised? Or what else can we do with housing? What else can we do to get more sustainability and, you know, young folks who want to stay here and keep Falmouth vibrant and affordable? So that's one thing that we're doing. We're going to start the meeting today. I'll just, I'm going to in a minute introduce my colleagues who organized this. Megan English-Frogge and Doug Brown. We also all take turns kind of chairing the outreach. A couple of housekeeping points. If anyone is recording, we want to be sure that you let us know and that you stay in one place so we don't have people that feel like they're being chased by cameras. Is there anyone who is recording? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who's recording? Thank you.
I will be at some points.
Okay, from one position. Thanks. And so we'll, we just want to express gratitude is the most important thing. We can do our jobs better if we hear directly from you. As many times as we're out and about in town hearing things and welcoming that you come up and say, oh, can I, can I just ask you one quick question? Can I just tell you, I'm thinking about something, I know you're not here for that? That's totally appreciated by all of us in the most wholehearted way. But, you know, for today, we want to hear from you. We want to hear not just town meeting members, let us know what your ideas are, what you think could be better, what you think's working, what might not be working. Maybe you've heard of something. The reason that we, the Selectmen go to lots of events and we like to collaborate with other communities to hear that might be a better mousetrap, it might be a less expensive way of doing things. With that, I'm sure that my colleague Megan English-Frogge is going to fill in whatever I might have not said. And thank you for your time. We're grateful for it. Thank you for leaving your guests, leaving your kids, coming here. It's a, you know, it's a beautiful facility, but we really appreciate and consider it a gift to us. Thank you. So this feels sort of like a, I don't know, it's like a boxing or something. Maybe that's not a good metaphor, but. Good morning. My name is Megan English-Frogge. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen. I just want to start by thanking St. Anthony's and thanking Father Avila for allowing us to have this space. Some of you have asked why we are across the parking lot down below. And the reason for that was that the church wanted to make sure that space was available if there was a funeral. There isn't one today, but obviously you can't plan those. So the Father, when he was gracious enough to let us come and use this space, that was the one condition was that we use the space. So I know it's a little bit cozy. I think, you know, that speaks volumes to the great turnout we've had on the Saturday. I know there are many activities in town today, but we have been really pushing since February when we had the first live survey to follow up so we can make sure we open it up to some of our summer residents who weren't able to be there or folks who worked the last time who weren't able to come to the events in February. So this is really a continuation of that conversation. And for anyone who wasn't able to attend, just a reminder of kind of what the format is. Essentially, this is really an opportunity for you to have the Board of Selectmen, there's also town administrators here, many department heads captive to hear from you. It's not a place for debate or, you know, back and forth because that really what we have found limits the number of people who get to share their thoughts and their concerns. So what we have is David Vieira, I don't know where he went, but, oh, it was right here. David has offered, he was, we reached out to him because we think he'd be another opportunity to have a great collaboration between town leadership and our state representative because so many of the issues that we know we're going to hear about, we can't just take on or fix as a town, but we need that representation, we need that advocacy at the state level. And so we thought it was a good opportunity for more collaboration. David's going to be our facilitator. What he has are some prompts for conversation that are very general that we've put together. It's exactly the same format as in February to help start that conversation. We're going to go through the prompts. We'll give about 10 minutes for each prompt for people to share in. Phyllis Downey is recording everything. And so we are very thankful she's been here since early this morning. Put on the air conditioning. I know it doesn't feel like a nap because the door's been open, but it'll catch up again. But she's going to take down everything that folks say. So when you get up, just please state your name because she doesn't know everyone in this room. Say who you are, you can certainly say what your precinct is. She's going to take that information down, she's going to summarize what you say, just like we did in February. And we'll put that all together and take a look at it. And we'll use that to, you know, set our agendas, to think about issues that we need to put forward for discussion, for follow-up. So it's really important that, you know, everyone here have an opportunity to share their thoughts. At the end, there'll be about 20 or 30 minutes depending on how the conversation goes. We'll, we'll open it up for more general comments that may not have been captured by some of the prompts. So if you have a really specific thing that you want to talk about and you don't think it fits in with the prompts, there's going to be some space at the end to have that conversation. Okay? So thank you all for being here. Thank you to Peter Johnson Sob for making multiple runs for coffee and bagels. They didn't give him any cream or sugar this morning, so he braved Dunkin' Donuts twice on road race weekends. So thank you. Again, thank you to Phyllis for being here very early. Thank you to all of you for attending. And we'll get started.
Thanks, Megan.
There are some, there are some seats for folks coming in. If you see an empty seat, please take it. Raise your hand if you have empty seats. Thank you. David's not going to be able to sit down again, so.
Anyone else? Look for a second. Two right here.
Sure, over there.
I want to search it, I like. All right, I'm Dave Vieira, again, State Rep., Town Moderator, but most important lifelong resident of Falmouth, grew up in T-Ticket where the T-Ticket Park is now, used to be, Joe was driving, or Ace Joe was my grandfather. So I've lived here in East Falmouth my whole life. I got my Eagle Scout here with two 42s, like, over here. So this morning I thought, gee, I'm going to put on a jacket and tie to go do this moderating thing. And I thought, I remember meeting in this hall in the summer with the Boy Scouts. Boy, was it hot! And when we met here and it was hot, I said, I'm just going to wear the short-sleeve polo shirt. I opened up the door and I thought, it's cool inside here. I've got air conditioning. And Joe.
You're getting old, Dave.
Joe Delso reminded me that I was also with varsity Team One at the Falmouth Rockin' Gun Club where we're working on the Farnley Bar restoration project with the folks up there from the varsity staff. A quick question, how many of you are summer residents? Okay, a good number, because I know that was one of the things that the Selectmen wanted to hit on by doing this in the summer, the folks that weren't here in February. So it's good to see a number of summer residents. How many of you are from outside of the East Falmouth area, live outside of this town? Okay, so we do have some representation from other parts of town. How many of you are from T-Ticket? How many are from Racoit? Nobody from Racoit? Oh, one more, this is, okay. How many are from East Falmouth? How many from Hatchville?
Well, yeah.
So we have a good cross-section of the villages within East Falmouth, East Falmouth Port, it's the largest represented group here today. So let's start off with our first prompt. The first prompt is, what do you like about Falmouth that needs to be protected? This is really sort of starting from these strengths, right? What's, what's good? What do we like? What do we want to help preserve? And then we'll talk about some issues and challenges that we want to change as we go forward. But for the first prompt.
I like the fact that we have tree-lined streets.
She likes the fact that we have tree-lined streets. Oh, in your name, please. That one for the right.
Dale Gray.
Someone over here? Yeah, on the same topic, preserving the quaintness of our town. I've written a few letters on it. Some kind of a leading composition for the post, state and town EPWs, planning to span Route 28, put in another supersized, like, shop and job, and put on Marvis, up in Homestead, widening the whole road to 63, putting bike lane sidewalks when, you know, bike people from town would rather see like a bike path, so that it's safe on the outside of curbs. This growing opposition, I hope we will, plenty of time. This is good. And I'm hearing, I'm just so you all know, some of you are probably in the room as well. We're hearing in my office as the State Rep. about the issues related to the state portion of this layout. Oh, and name again that I want to hear. Jim Maja.
John Collins. I like access to the water, public beaches as well as just access to the beautiful waterways we have here.
Tricia Maloney. I love the convenience of everything that's around us. Restaurants, shops, supermarkets, banks, you name it. You can find everything here without traveling very far.
Linda Tophie, Precinct Four. I've lived here over 50 years. And I like the fact that we still have, in my estimation, a small-town feeling. It's not a small town, it's huge town. But I've always felt that it had the same, the small-town feeling of where I grew up. And another thing I really appreciate is the fact that we respect walkways. When people cross the street, they don't turn down, when people stop, when people, when a somebody gets to a sidewalk. It's great, you can depend on it. You just have to be careful when you go to other towns.
I'm Miriam McAdams. I love all of the estuaries in town and would love to visit them.
I like the rate of volunteerism in the town. Probably one of the highest in the state.
Name, she's waiting for her name, sorry.
Joe Quinzelmiani.
Thank you.
The quaintness of the town, the friendship with neighbors. I'm definitely going to go tree-lined streets because I'm a driver's show. I didn't wash the shore, I go the shore. I'm going to the city of Lynn, and it's a box field. I don't like to see super highways through the town. I wanted to keep quaint, so I moved here, bring my family up here. So I think that's really important. Access to the beach, access to Google Park, places the weak and less taxpayers enjoy. Overburdened with the fees sometimes I charge, but it's part of the game, I guess. I don't like it. But I like the quaintness, tree-lined streets, friendship, community, community involvement. And again, on volunteerism, if you don't have a volunteer heart. The thing is, is that I don't want to see this become a Route 28 yarmen. Then you're definitely going to lose the quaintness of the village.
Keith, Precinct Four. I am going to piggyback on Joe Q. and a few other comments. I love the feeling of quaintness and charm in our town. I like that it's still very much a small-town feel. I love the fact that I feel and consider most people in town like family or extended family. I feel confident raising our children here. And I went away to college and traveled and very much chose to come back. And I didn't want to necessarily come back to big, mean-street yarmen or, you know, I like the tree-lined, the small-town feel, the, you know, I want my kids to feel safe when I let them ride their bikes.
Cheryl Williams, Precinct Three. And I'm a local girl. And what I particularly love about Falmouth is the fact of the people who are absolutely passionate and totally engaged in the land trust, the 300 committee, Salt Pond, et cetera, to preserve as much open space in this town as absolutely positive so we can maintain and continue the quaintness, the quaintness that so many of you are talking about, which I appreciate as well.
Randy Johnson, East Falmouth. I have to be fair here and say that during, there's a lot more that I like about Donald Vicson September and May. That's why we're staying in East Falmouth today. It's just a Thursday, so much more. It feels like Boston in the summer. You know, the kind of thing that you would like to retreat from a little more? You can't do it. I shop early in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock. By that time, most people are getting up and jogging around.
I, Norrie Burn, Precinct Six. I'm concerned about the growth of the town, which goes along with the, you know, the precinct, keeping it quaint.
Bob Darniell, Precinct Three. I'd like to get some more action on bike paths in the town. I think particularly at this time of year, people on bikes, I think they fall asleep or something because they drift out into the traffic. I have a Prius, which is a very quiet car, so I'm starting to just toot the horn way ahead so hopefully wake them up and say, I'm there. But I know that this is probably an impossibility, but if we could have some east-west corridors, north-south, something that would be permanent, easy exits, like a highway almost, where you could, you know, where bikes could go and be safe and not compete with a.
Connect to the parks.
Yeah.
I'm going to piggyback on that a little bit. I have a second one, but I love that one. I think where we pay excise tax and we also contribute to the bike paths, I think that cars should be able to start driving on bike paths. It would make things a lot easier. Think about its direction. It's just highways, essentially, people would get with it. Actually, so Philip Fonzo, Precinct Nine. I really love our police and fire departments and the way that you can look in a cruiser or you can look in an ambulance or you can look in a ladder truck and you can wave at the person, you know who they are. I appreciate the fact that no matter what the condition is, they show up and it, there's no condition, and they're there to help every single one of us. The one thing that I do not like is the fact that our police and fire are extremely short-staffed. I enjoy having low taxes in Falmouth. I own my own home now for coming up on two years. I've got a 3,000-square-foot house on a half an acre and I'm paying like 2,500 bucks a year. I'll blow up on that, Mr. Suso. Hey, I don't need that anymore. I love it. It's, I mean, I pay half of what the sandwich base, but our police and fire are extremely short-staffed and I think we're doing them a disservice while they're trying to help us.
My name is Tom Roger, East Falmouth, and I was basically going to say the same. I think the town is run very, very well, very professional, from the town manager through the heads of the departments. If you look around, police and fire are very, very qualified folks. They're excellent ambassadors to the community. They provide great service. Town officials such as the, you know, the beach superintendent and all the other managers do a great, great job here.
Ralph Erp, Precinct Eight. I'd like the agricultural history here in Falmouth to remain and continue. An example is the town saved Tony Andrews Farm, and there's an organization that's working to help and promote that. So the agricultural history in Falmouth is important and I'd like to see it retained.
Anybody know what this property was before it was St. Anthony's Church?
Strawberry.
Yeah, this was Marshall's Strawberry Farms, right? And all of the Portuguese Catholics and Abertians in East Falmouth that had farms would take a day of harvest, where they would take strawberries to market and they put the money into a fund. And they purchased this farm from Mr. Marshall. And then they built the original portion of the St. Anthony's Church. And they applied to the diocese in Fall River to have a crease come here to have at least one mass on Sunday, but until the 70s was in Portuguese and Latin, and now all of it is obviously in English. But if you go into this church, if you haven't been in the church before, you'll see a stained-glass window with a number on it. But one of the stained-glass windows is all of the Portuguese and Cape Verdean strawberry farmers farming the field. And the other one is the strawberry plant itself, the runners that run out and create the new plants. And so that's a deep agricultural history right here. We always say that St. Anthony's is our church built on strawberries.
There is some in our East Falmouth. I moved here a year ago, so I put this, this past month was my year, the permanent residence, purchase the home. And I'd like to say that I love living here for this last year. I've seen the quaintness. I appreciate all the cultural activities you have. I like the idea of, you know, everything about conserving the environment. I think it's kind of interesting here, that they get real proud of here in the summer. I came from the Dallas-Fort Worth area. So it is all relative, but I understand what you're saying. But I really would like to make sure that you embrace the tourists because I feel like, although we want to keep all the quaintness, I agree with everything there, but economic development is also important. And it does keep our taxes down. I mean, I'm paying half of what I paid in taxes there for a home that is more expensive here. So I really do appreciate that. And whatever we can do to have that balance of appreciating the people who come here for those few months in the summer, because we all know, I already know September, the fall is a great kept secret, so I like that, right here. But I mean, it's a good place and I really enjoy living here. But I also want to make sure we kind of clean up some of the properties on Main Street that look pretty rundown and make, keep it vibrant and keep the quaintness. And all the things we do for you are a real big concern.
Ron Clattenburg, Precinct Eight. And I've lived here for over four years and I agree with just about what everyone has said, but one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the fact that I really like the fact that so much small business and family-owned businesses in town. I'm a great believer in local business and I think it's great to be able to see and interact with so many individuals in this town that own their business. And I think that's a real plus.
David, we're at 13 minutes.
Okay, a little trouble.
Yeah, Bob Baker, Precinct Four. Couple of things have already been said, but I really do like the professionalism of the police and the fire department and their dedication. Somebody mentioned volunteerism, the service center to me when I moved there 11 years ago. I've never seen anything quite like, and I am partially involved with it, but the work that people do to help those that need help is incredible. And I really appreciate the, I love the beaches. The one thing I don't understand is why they don't get all the money that they take in. Why they only give it to me, that's something that they might not look at.
Ben, here, Precinct Six. I'll say something about the bike paths. For quickly, that we put signs, the town put signs out on the bike path on the road. They were white, they've already washed off. If they put them in a color, I think cars would know if you would go down Chapel Park Road, you cannot see on either side if anybody's coming and, and a lot of trucks, cars don't stop and we'll be, we're troubled sometimes. But the main thing I'd like to say is I'd like to see the Eddie Marks Building used. It's the oldest building in town. We have a great history here. There is no place it's shown or anything else. I think a little museum in there if you don't want anything else to do with it. It's a storehouse now and real crime and the taxpayers paid a fortune to get it back in shape. So let's use it for something that will help. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to run to the next prompt, but do not say for our open forum at the end any additional comments that you had on this section. The next series of questions is under the category, what are your priorities for the town? Let's start with what town's service is most in need of improvement and how would you suggest that we make it better?
Joe Nettle, Precinct Nine. I've written this up now, a couple speakers before have alluded to it. And I'll go back and use as example about the Winter Storm and the near-death shooting we had. And in November town meeting, Chief Duncan up and reminded us that the covered police department is less than what we had in 2018, is less than what we had in 2008. And we experienced about three weeks ago, you know, two policemen being shot in Falmouth in response. We had two terrific Winter Storms. I'm currently working with a project with the Department of Public Works, Director of Falmouth Public Library. And we have, I'm sorry, but this administration, the Board of Selectmen, have reduced the staff of the town of Falmouth such that I don't feel that we're getting the services. We add more people, but we seem to have forgotten people. It would be the enterprise, the capital. Improvement's coming up. And as a town meeting member, I've always supported the acquisition of equipment, but when you have equipment, if you don't have people to operate it. And I think this is a very dangerous precedent. We have a combination of an assistant and a rec. department and a beach department. So instead of having two people, now we're going to have one. That I have to give an opinion, it can be the charter. I don't think that process would follow correctly according to the charter. And I have some grave concerns about the public library. These Falmouth libraries had hours cut, and I would like to see the story. And we seem to be on the tab of projects. Let's do these. Granted, you have to buy equipment and we have to do projects, but I think we put the employee in a second position to the importance of the taxpayers. I don't mind paying taxes as long as I get services. You have trees down in the town of Falmouth now that, that'll be there next spring. The tree department has less people, the Department of Public Works has less people. But we go to police and fire, yes, because of the case affecting the town meeting. I'm sorry, I can take a little time for this, but I think this is going to come up at the town meeting in the spending of money.
So Philly positions that are on the books that are not currently funded.
Yeah, I wonder how many positions that we've created on that we haven't filled. I have to convince Chief Dunn because he spoke before something happened. That's an alarming figure, 2018. We have less, I think he said nine, eight or nine policemen than we had in 2008. So as taxpayers, it's nice, and I didn't speak at the back of where it was. Me and the board, I got this, he was on his old fence. It was like pat each other on the back and say, I'm good, everybody is. I think we bring this many people, and this is nice, but I know the issues that I, that I hear from people that talk to me, that need the public for you. And we'll discuss them over town meeting.
Garth Snyder, Precinct Four. My word for today is compliance. I think we lose a tremendous amount of revenue by having great policies and rules but not having any follow-up to make sure that we are compliant with them. My examples are, we have animal control, they are wonderful people, but they do not take advantage of coming down. Their hours are such that they don't come down to the beaches at five o'clock when everybody knows you could run down there with your dog and let it go wild. They could make a lot of money in giving out fines or asking people, the whole purpose of that was to not have dogs on the beach in the summer. It doesn't mean they're just not there during the day, but it was supposed to be 24 hours a day. I love animals, as you all probably know, I do a lot with animals, but it is a well-known fact, if you, I've even heard a lifeguard say, but if you come down after five, no one will know. That's number one. In addition, they don't come to the dog park, they could come there and check on licensing. They could check on vaccinations. I have held a meeting with all the dog parks on the Cape, every other animal control office. Every other animal control officers are going to the dog parks and doing that. They're finding it to be very helpful to their relationship with dog owners. More, I can tell you, I know of many that have been either dropped in illegally or people are giving their morgues to other people and no one's checking that they match. That's an easy thing to check and go around and inflate it in these ponds and figure that out. And it's a nice little lump of money and you can change up the way the culture is. Conservation, it's well-known, if you don't call conservation for a permit, you do your own training, if you're physically able, you can get away with anything. We have people on our pond that have literally napalmed their property and it's never been anything done about it. That matters to me because in a hurricane, it is gonna matter, that those would stop. And we talked about, well, in the last week, I went to Bristol Beach and Woodneck Beach. We don't have anybody staffing the gate to take revenue or check on beach passes. That's people coming in August, not September, but in August to our beaches for nothing. And that's a lot of lost revenue and I think, you know, with social media, it gets around real fast. No one's checking at Woodneck, no one's checking at Bristol, and those things can be fixed. The money should come to pay for these people by what you do by collecting the revenues. That would be correct. So I say hire compliant people, make sure they're doing their jobs and it should pay for itself many times over. That's my recommendation.
So I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Neto's spot there, Phil Funzel, Precinct 9, again. We're down to 37 officers in the town of Falmouth right now. Thirty-seven. We used to be at nine detectives, we're at three. We are in a heroin epidemic. Drug buys are down, drug busts are down, deaths are on the rise. I too would like to pay a little bit more in the way of taxes if it means that bad guys, number one, are gonna get arrested, which I'd like honestly to give to you and say, I'd like our legal system to start enforcing heroin addicts not get $40 bail and then sent on their way to murderers. So that's something you can take back to the State House with you personally. I really think that we're... I have seen, not personally, but I've seen Officer Moore's gunshot graves, as they call it. And just so everybody's clear, I have big hands. Now, if you take my middle finger, which is the thickest, longest finger on my hand, and you put that in the middle of my neck, as deep as my finger is, is as deep as that gunshot, as that bullet went into his neck. Okay? It wasn't a grave. This is a grave. Looks like a scrape. He had a bullet one centimeter from blowing his spine apart. One centimeter. That's a real thing. Our police, they need more. The chief has quoted as saying he wants to take some of the money from this police fund after the guys were shot, wants to buy a fax machine, firearm training safety machine or something similar. How can you get an accurate simulation of a firearm simulator if you have your officers short-staffed and working double, triple shifts covering details? It's the point to see how far they can get run down before they can accurately fire, before they can accurately see if, when someone does this, if it's a BB gun or a 22. I think we need to up our police and I think we need to do it now. And they're on a contract negotiation, so I really think that the public needs to start putting pressure to get this done.
Don Wim, Precinct 7. And this is probably as much for you as the selecting. Better coordination of state projects and town projects. You know, think about the Monarch Bridge and, you know, that's the alternate way that all of us in Falmouth get into town. And what's gonna happen at the same time that the state is doing the whodery stuff at Main Street? Example, you know, just like what town, what the state and the Army Corps of Engineers finally realized last week about the Monarch Bridge, exact same type of thing.
So just real quick, so you know, this year, the Department of Transportation has just developed a database system, which takes all of the local projects that the towns have funded to the state projects as well as federal highway projects and does an overlay so they can see where these projects are happening at the same time. Proof will be in the pudding if we use the data going forward and we're starting to use the data on the Army Corps project.
Craig Mazemanian, Precinct 2. There's some redundancy here and if you'd just be with me for a minute. First, I'll talk about blocking and tackling. And basically what I mean is, is that rather than grandiose, large, major project, millions of dollars, we ought to really look at ourselves and say, what can we do to maintain? And specifically the DPW, I think they do a great job, okay? But there's a lot missing. Example, look at the fire hydrants. I don't want the house on fire, that they try to open that thing up and it's rusted, salted. Most of the fire hydrants in town look like they haven't been touched 20, 30, 40 years. We all know that we live in salt air. It's pretty tough on metal. Those things should be painted every year and they should be tested probably as much as twice a year. There has been some banter, I've seen it in the paper, et cetera, that they're in a project, they're working from the outside in, et cetera. You know, I've heard this, I got a fire hydrant outside my house, I've never seen it flush and I've been there for three years. So that's what I mean by blocking and tackling. I met with the DPW regarding Little Pond being dredged. They said, fine, we're gonna dredge it next year. It's two years now, it's never been dredged. Yet we spent $26 million on a sewer project to keep Little Pond healthy? You can't keep it healthy if there's a sandbar sitting in front of the tidal flow. And that needs to be done and looked at and be put on some kind of schedule. That's what I mean by blocking and tackling. The second thing is, I'll go back to the police. Our association had a meeting a couple Sundays ago, a couple Saturdays ago, excuse me. Chief Dunn was there as a spokesperson. We asked him a series of questions, one of which is, how do you look at your resources relative to your budget, et cetera? He said he was pretty good in terms of tangible resources as it relates to cars and equipment, et cetera, but he was woefully short on headcount. And I think some numbers were just given out and those numbers are accurate. So I asked him, I said, well, look, I got central alarm at my house. How many minutes would you judge that it would be when that central alarm goes off, when you'd be at my house? There was a large pause. And I said, why the pause? And he goes, well, I have five cars out on the road over 45 square miles. If I have an accident in East Falmouth, I send two cars. If I have an issue, let's say down in the village, I'll send two cars. That leaves one car. If that car's in North Falmouth and I'm at the heights, he didn't give me an answer. So protection of life and property is very important, that's why I pay my taxes for. And I just can't imagine a town with 45 square miles, we've only got five cars on the road. But we've got, we wanna be big, it seems. We're doing all these big things like we're some huge city. We talked about quaintness, that's what we should be, but we should have adequate resources to block and tackle what we need to have as citizens.
Thirteen minutes, David. I'll sit.
My name is Gregory Tontos and I'm in Precinct 4. My big concern has to do with safety and security. And to that respect, I'm referring to Central Avenue. Central Avenue and Monarch Road happen to be one of the busiest thoroughfares in this town. It's a shortcut from downtown to Mashpee. It's a lovely drive. I consider it one of the prettiest drives in town. However, when we talked about Central Avenue, safety and security have to do with the need for a traffic light. A traffic light that will allow cars to go in and out of Central Avenue with safety and assurance. It's a terrible spot. I happen to live on Central Avenue and utilize that area, so I'm well experienced. At that particular junction, there's a crosswalk that doesn't exist. And there are people who use that area in fear of people running over, literally. I've gone to the town with fathers and spoken to about this situation and like the hydrants, nothing gets done. I would like to see a survey done on Central Avenue once and for all to determine how many cars exit and enter that street and when they do that, so that we can regulate it and allow pedestrians to cross, allow drivers to go in and out safely and be assured that they're not gonna be run over. And that, to me, is very critical. Thank you.
One more in this category and then we're gonna move to another one.
Peter Hargreaves, Precinct 9. I want to thank everyone in our leadership elected and the town members for being here. And so I appreciate those people, what they do and their expertise, and I don't want to take my, anyone to take my comment as a critical review of their work. But my idea that I want to explain here briefly is coming from reading the executive summary of the February sensing and understanding, a lot of people are confused about how to get access to leadership, how to have a voice from their community and how to basically understand how our government works. And personally, as a relative newcomer, I found Falmouth such a welcoming community and you can do essentially whatever time allows you to do in terms of volunteering and getting involved in different activities or even running for office. So I was puzzled by those comments, but I understand them better now. And I would say, I don't disagree with anything that's been said, I agree with it, but it's the sum and substance and the product of our process. And so you all heard the definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing over and expecting a different result. But I think a lot of problems might be solved by examining our organization within the town, not changing our government, that is what this is about, and our process. And specifically, the suggestion is, and especially timely because we're undergoing a charter review, which is done every seven years, is to consider that a select board member be elected by a voting district. Call it, you know, two precincts elect once each select board member with one at large, if we want to keep it at five. Or we could make it nine and have each precinct vote one select board member and have a larger board. All of that is within our control and ability to change, from my understanding. But I think that would give the citizens someone who is accountable to them to bring these kinds of things more consistently to the leadership who are setting priorities and guiding our choices within the town and eliminate a lot of frustration. If those leaders are not educating their constituents who elected them, they will be replaced. And I think looking at the diverse, I'm really happy with the people we have elected, but if you look at where they live, they represent three or four of the villages, which we have seven or eight, depending on how you count them, and maybe four of the precincts. So I think we need to think about the structure and...